We are now calling the Finance and Administration Committee to order. I'd like to start with the approval of the minutes, please.
It's been moved.
It's been moved, kind of second.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the minutes. All in flavor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair is aye, the minutes are approved. Thank you. We are starting off today with our year-end financial report from the General Fund, and that'll be Tanya Wallace. Come on up, Tanya. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. As a point of clarification, this is really going to be the 2023 mid-year forecast, and you should have all received this report this morning. I don't expect that you've had time to read it yet, but I will ask that you do take some time, and we'll have some further conversations at another point in time. So I'm going to give you an introduction to that report today. The end-of-year reports for 2022, that report will come to you at the latest, May 31st. We will certainly aim to have it to you sooner, but that is by ordinance when we're required to have it, and they just finished up some of the entries last week. So we're working eagerly on that report. Okay, councilmembers. So what I'm going to cover for you today, just again, just an introduction to that report as you review it, is the forecast, the report, I'll talk a little bit about it, a historical review, and then the 2023, this is the mid-year with a forecast and then a five-year forecast. So the goal of the report is, and this is really important, is just to show our trajectory in terms of revenues and expenditures, assuming current economic conditions and operations. So there's no assumption of a change in service level or changes in our operations, and it's information that we know. It is not a budget. So in any case, when we have forecasts, and we forecast a surplus or a deficit, that is not to imply that that is going to be a budget that is later going to be presented to you. Now, the basis of the report, this is just the General Fund. These are not projections that cover any other fund, nor are these projections down at a departmental-level review. It is at a summary-level line item of the General Fund, is at a roll-up level. So in addition to the economic and operational information that we take into account, and this is also a very unprecedented time in our economy, it's been over 100 years since we've had a pandemic and recovered from it, so it's very unusual, and a lot of different information coming at us. But it also includes about two to four months of actual operating information from 2023. Now, you might be asking, well, why only two months? This is definitely by the end of April. For most of our expenditures, we can look at the end of April, but in some cases of our revenue, particularly sales tax, which is our leading indicator for economic activity, it's two months behind. So certainly by the end of April, we only have two months of sales tax information at our disposal. Okay, a little bit of the General Fund historical review, and I hope you can kind of see this. The blue are expenditures, the orange is revenue. And if you look at those first couple years there of 2013, this is a 10-year review, 2013 through 2015, it was very steady. Both revenues and expenditures were kind of moving at the same pace, moving along fairly well. And it was about 2014 when the public safety SIP loans began, and there was some strong interest income that was coming in that was keeping pace with those expenditure growths. Then you look at 2016 and 2019, and you can see there started to be a spread between the revenues and expenditures, particularly in 2017. This was a year of really strong sales tax revenue.
I have to note, that's when Councilmember Keneer and I got on the council.
Big contributing factor. But I will say, from 17 through 19, just in that same timeframe, Guild negotiations had started, and they were very prolonged through the period. In fact, the Guild negotiations did not settle until May of 2021. So had they settled on time, we would have seen a different expenditure line through those years. So that is something to be remembered, is that that slightly misrepresent what was actually happening, and is part of the reason why in 2021, you do see the significant increase from 2,203 million to 216 million, is then the Guild finally settled and all the retro pay came into place.
But we did set aside money for that retro.
What actually happened, these are just actuals, that's a great point, because it does get confusing. This is when it actually gets paid out. So even though money is set aside, and it should be clarified, the set aside was in the unappropriated and unallocated fund balance. It was not set aside in a separate account, separate from that.
I just want it to be noted that we did set it aside.
Yes, and this is just like in 2022, when you see 238 million, a lot of that is retroactive pay from the other labor agreements. We had 270 and M&amp;P. So that is part of that increase there. 2020, the big change there that you see is on that orange line, revenues actually decreased. That shouldn't be any surprise because of the economic shutdown that occurred. Our revenues decreased, we lost 2.4% of our total revenues, or nearly 5 million, when normally we would have had at least some growth, probably in the range, at best, even in an economic recession, there were two months of a recession. In 2020, we would have had maybe a 3% growth. Here, we had a drop of 2.4. So in effect, near 5% or more of a change in revenue from what we would have anticipated. And then 21 through 22, you do still see stronger revenue growth, that is part of the rebound that occurred after, in 2020, after COVID. And this is, I mean, we all saw what we were experiencing, particularly in 22, with the inflation growing, people are still spending, buying, but they're buying stuff differently. Labor pressures impacted other businesses, we were not immune to that, and you know the outcome of some of those labor agreements. Any questions, councilmembers? Okay, looking now, focusing on 2023. General Fund projections. I'm going to start with planned use of fund balance and reserves, because in 22 actuals, and you will get more information about 22, so I'm not going to cover that, but you will have more in the end-of-year report, you do see there was a planned use of 19.6 million. This is very similar to just saying that savings account, unappropriated fund balance, gets moved into the checking account. So it's there, it's deposited, we planned on using it. In 23, there was an SBO that came forward for the incumbents' roll forward, so again, taking three point, almost 3.3 million from the savings account, putting it into the checking account, plan to use it. These are the other deposits into the checking account, if we're working on that analogy. So total fund balance and revenue, particularly for 2023, projected, we're projecting about a $1.7 million difference between the current budget and what we're projecting now. Key differences are really in business taxes or those outside utilities. We are seeing right now, just based on some of the actuals that are coming in, and some of the later rate increases that have occurred from those outside agencies, slight increase of about 1.7 million. Not seeing as much on the inter-fund or our own city utilities revenue increases. So that is the majority of the change on the revenue side. Any questions here, councilmembers? Overall, when you compare it against 2022 actuals, you can see it's quite different, about 10 million, and that is because of the savings account or what's coming from unappropriated that was planned for 22 versus 23. Now, we look at expenditures. So you can see in 22 actuals, 237 million compared to 233 on the 23 projections. This does take into account some higher vacancies, it is still a bit of a struggle to fill some of our vacant positions, and then that does drive up overtime. So we have taken that into account here, based on the payroll that was through mid-April. Assumes increased reliance on contract and internal services, which is on row 27, services in our governmental professional services, why we're projecting a slightly higher increase in that category as well. We're still attempting to deliver all services at the expected service level, and so sometimes we compensate, and a good example is in HR, with the lack of analysts there, we have extended, with your approval, contracts in that area. The big watch item is obviously the Guild contract settlement and what that turns out to be. That still couples a lot with vacancies. With vacancies, it does drive up overtime. The settlement of that Guild contract with higher overtime is a larger retro pay than what is projected or what is assumed in the budget. So that is a watch item, we are watching it very carefully, and we do provide the Mayor and Johnny monthly reports on that. But you can see under the projection, when you net out revenues and net out expenditures, that very bottom line in row 32, we're still projecting to be in the black from an operational perspective. Councilmember Cathcart.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. If you want to finish your thought, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, in 2022, the operational, but there will be more information coming in that end-of-year report, the operational surplus of 5.1 million for that year. So overall, even though it's going to be a tight, tight operations, we're still projected to be in the black.
So I guess my question is, and you mentioned the watch item for the Guild, so is that built into any of these, into your projections here? And then also, you know, where we're projecting police overtime right now? And then, do we assume that track is funded outside of the General Fund, or are there elements of that that are encompassed in this?
There are no track expenditures in this assumption for 23.
Okay, and then how about fleet? Does this account for the fleet spending that we may need to consider?
In terms of the vehicle purchases?
Yeah.
No, no, no more than what has already been approved.
Okay.
But wait, you didn't get your other, you only got, you had your first question not answered, about police overtime.
Well, yeah, I mean, just asking, you know, to what extent is that built into your projection? I mean, right now, we're seeing, you know, pretty big overtime as a result of vacancies, and the projection is that it could be a pretty big number, and I'm just wondering if that's built into this estimation.
It's built in, based on payroll information through mid-April. There's still a lot that could impact police overtime, certainly directed patrols, and then, most importantly, are those recruit academies and how successful those recruit academies are. So yes, on a monthly basis, we're monitoring those vacancies, we're monitoring the recruit academy and the success of those, and that will, that could change that projection.
I'm just challenged about the recruit academies, because for 2023, even if they're recruited, it will still be, they won't be on the streets, so we'll still be significantly in overtime, which I think we've been estimating about eight to 10% a month in overtime of our total salaries. So I'm just looking, and we've only gone through April, so I'm just trying to figure this out in my head, if we're already overtime in April, and we've got eight more months to go, I don't know how we can be in the black, kind of with your projections, based on police overtime.
Well, and...
Am I missing, I may be missing, I'm sorry.
We are monitoring police and police overtime. This is a fund-level report, so there are savings in other categories that are probably masking some of what might be happening specifically in police. But even as of this morning, we looked at police all the way through May 15th, in total, they've used about 50% of their overtime, uniform overtime budget only. So it's about 50%, and we're not quite 50% of the way through the year, so on a straight-line basis, would there be an overfund in a specific line item within a specific department of the General Fund? Yes. Now, if we were to look at, for example, their base wages, another specific line in a specific department within the General Fund, there are significant savings there as well. So it compensates, and that's why we look at this from a fund-level perspective, and you'll see in the 22 report of year-end, the General Fund ended the year in the black. Did police exceed their budget? Yes, because of overtime, and we know that very well. But the fund, at a fund level, still ended in the black.
But fair to say, we used ARPA dollars to do that. ARPA dollars to the General Fund.
Yes.
That's why it ended in the black.
Yes.
And we're not going to have ARPA funds this year, or we won't have as many.
Correct, there is about 2 million that is assumed in the 23 that was approved in the budget for use of the General Fund. And I mean, all I can say is, yes, based on the information that we have today and the actual spent through the year, we are still projecting to be in the black overall from a fund level. Now, there's a lot that could change.
Before we move on, Tanya, so you said there are other funds that are kind of masking the loss in police. At some point, I'd like to know, in the General Fund, what those funds are, and are they not already dedicated to other areas of spending or encumbered? So I guess I just have to have more information on what those funds are that are covering the deficit in police as we go forward, because those departments would probably need to use their funds. You can come back to me on that, I just need more clarity.
Yes, and I completely agree, this is a little bit out of order. Your end-of-year report will highlight where some of those savings occurred, and a budgetary variance is not necessarily savings. But did that compensate in the General Fund? Yes, it did.
So, Tanya, we received a report earlier that police were over their overtime budget for the year to date. So you're saying they've only spent 50% of their overtime? That's confusing.
Based on year-to-date actual activity, as of today, May 15th, they have consumed 50% of their total uniform overtime budget.
So what was the report that we got about them being over their overtime, then?
So that report is also accurate, if you were to break down their budget per month and compare how much their actual spend is, it's no different than now, we're not 50% of the way through the budget.
So if we have those numbers, why aren't we using that data to extrapolate for the rest of the year?
You can, but a straight-line breakdown of the budget is not realistic all the time. Sometimes, a straight line is perfectly fine, but there's also seasons to an annual budget. And so the budget in the report that you get, the quarterly report, is simply a straight-line. But if you take, for example, parks, they'll have seasonal increases in the summertime and lower spend in the wintertime. But the budget is still 1/12th every month, regardless of the seasons.
Well, I don't mean to dwell on this, but it's important, because it's always fire and police that we're talking about in terms of overtime mostly, and they don't have seasonality. So right now, we know that recruiting is down, we know that they're going to continue to accrue overtime. It would seem prudent to look at it on a yearly projection of where we are now and project that out for the year, because we know we're going to, they're going to be, based on what we know right now, they're going to be over their overtime.
I don't disagree with you at all, and that's what we've done here. So it is included in here. So moving on to the General Fund five-year forecast, do you want to point out, yes, we are showing in '24 through '28, on a conservative basis, that there is a deficit if we do nothing with our service levels and we make no changes, and revenues move at a very conservative pace. And by conservative, no use of carryover funds, so that's assumed, that we're not using unappropriated fund balance, to help compensate. And I will point out, so the annual average growth rate during this five-year period is conservatively projected about 3%. It's hard to read it on the PowerPoint, but it is in your report. The historical actual growth rate was 3.8, so over the 10-year period, so over a much longer period that did take into account the pandemic, but also took into account really strong growth in 2017 through 2019, this is conservative at only 3%. Again, a lot can change over the course of five years. We are projecting stronger personnel growth rates, that is largely because of the labor contracts that have been approved, they will start to renew in the middle of this five-year period, some of them, as well as some of the benefit costs will change as the corresponding base wages also increase. Here, we've projected a 3.8, so slightly stronger than what the actual historical average has been of 3.6. So overall, these are still conservative. Now, I want to take a quick look at the national economic horizon, because...
Tanya, before you go, and I'm not going to ask you for what you're factoring in, but you let us know already that we're going to have to pay increases in police for this year, presumably we'll get to a contract, and then it'll probably be a four-year contract. So do you have, are those projections included, or are they going to be higher on the labor cost once we settle on that?
The labor cost is just an average between 4% and 5%, which takes into account vacancy discounts, step increases, it's just an overall percentage increase applied to the number. So again, this is at a fund-level line item, not at a departmental, and then rolled up into the fund level.
Thanks.
I just wanted to quickly kind of cover this, because this is where a lot of the uncertainty, we are heavily relying on what is happening in the national economy as well, so we do pay attention to what is happening there. The funds rate right now is 5 and 1/4%. That is also the terminal rate, so that was, that just simply means this is the rate that the feds were targeting, and we've hit it. So they are going to be in a hold pattern, at least for right now. Their next meeting is June 13th and 14th. Also, in the first two weeks, we're going to start to see the pressure of the debt ceiling at the federal level. So a lot of this still, all factors into everything that we're seeing happening here, too. And I just stated, the Federal Reserve is going to be in a hold pattern. Interest rate cuts may be considered in 2024. So interest income is something that we've factored into the revenue projections, which helps in when interest rates are rising, and we're locking into those higher interest rates now. But interest rate cuts waiting until 2024 means that businesses are also going to be holding back on expenses until those rates start to decline. GDP is currently at 4.6. They are expecting inflation with the rate increases, that's the whole purpose of the interest rates increase, is to control that inflation. We also experience inflation in terms of our supplies and our goods and our capital projects. They're expecting them to return to a level in 2025 of 2%. So we still have 2024 to get through before we start seeing slower growth on that. By the end of 2023, they're expecting that to be at 3.6%, so we are expecting to see a slowdown. Lastly, as interest rates go up, inflation, as we're trying to hold inflation down, it should be expected that the unemployment will start to increase. That helps us in some respects on labor pressures that we also experience and our ability to recruit. So unemployment is right now at 3.4 on a national level for April, and at the end of '23, they do expect that to increase to 4.5. Again, that's not a bad situation, it does help us with labor pressures, but it also is the counterpoint of decrease in inflation, you're going to have increase in unemployment. And that concludes this report. Again, a lot more discussion, and expect another big report on end-of-year for '22.
Any other questions for Tanya? Councilmembers, the phone.
Yeah, thank you, Tanya. So I'm just trying to understand the ordinance that we passed, you're going to bring us the other one by the end of the month, but are you also going to bring forward an SBO for the rest of the year?
SBOS are being prepared for June, but it's our interpretation of the ordinance that there would be discussion first and absorption of this, and then we would bring forward recommendations.
Because I'm looking at the ordinance right now, it says, "By the May Finance and Administration Committee meeting," which is today, "the administration will provide a recommendation to the City Council, which via SBO rectifies the material budget inaccuracies."
And I appreciate that, Zepon, we will be bringing forward some SBOS from what have come in, but based on this, where we're still in the black, there would not, based on just this, there would... But interest rate cuts waiting until 2024 means that businesses are also going to be holding back on expenses until those rates start to decline. GDP is currently at 4.6. They are expecting inflation with the rate increases. That's the whole purpose of the interest rates increase, is to control that inflation. We also experience inflation in terms of our supplies and our goods and our capital projects. They're expecting them to return to a level in 2025 of 2%. So we still have 2024 to get through before we start seeing slower growth on that. By the end of 2023, they're expecting that to be at 3.6%. So we are expecting to see a slowdown. Lastly, as interest rates go up, inflation, as we're trying to hold inflation down, it should be expected that the unemployment will start to increase. That helps us in some respects on labor pressures that we also experience in our ability to recruit. So unemployment is right now at 3.4 on a national level for April, and at the end of '23, they do expect that to increase to 4.5. Again, that's not a bad situation. It does help us with labor pressures, but it also is the counterpoint of decrease in inflation. You're going to have increase in unemployment. And that concludes this report. Again, a lot more discussion, and expect another big report on end-of-year for '22.
Any other questions for Tanya? Councilmember Zepon?
Yeah, thank you, Tanya. So just trying to understand the ordinance that we passed, you're going to bring us the end of the, the other one by the end of the month, but are you also going to bring forward an SBO for the rest of the year?
SBOS are being prepared for June, but it's our interpretation of the ordinance that there would be discussion first and absorption of this, and then we would bring forward recommendations.
All right. Because I'm looking at the ordinance right now, it says, "By the May Finance and Administration Committee meeting," which is today, "the administration will provide a recommendation to the city council, which via SBO rectifies the material budget inaccuracies."
And I appreciate that, Zepon. We will be bringing forward some SBOS from what have come in, but based on this, where we're still in the black, there would not, based on just this, there would not be any budget realignments coming forward. It doesn't mean that there shouldn't be. It means just based on these projections, there wouldn't be any major realignments coming forward.
So that will be in June. Whatever alignment, if necessary, we'll see in June, SBOS. All right, thank you. Councilmember Kacar?
Yeah, and I think we have a couple of study sessions in June to talk about all of these things in the lead-up to a potential SBO.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, we are going to have short-term rental amendments and the tax updates from Amanda Bet. And Spencer Gardner?
Providing an update following our March study session, we've made some changes to the proposed text concerning short terminals and then related fees. Some updates from last week, we had a Plan Commission public hearing, and so they did recommend some amendments for staff to make before forwarding on to council, and I just want to give you guys an update on that as well. So just as a reminder, currently, the way the code is written is we have type A and type B. Type A is what you think of as your traditional vacation rental or short-term rental. Type B is a lot more similar to a bed and breakfast with the inclusion of a commercial meeting, so something like a luncheon or banquet where someone is paying to attend. And then obviously, they are only permitted in our residential zones. So we've been working with Granicus to get actual data on the number of permits in the city, and then they'll be assisting staff with whatever code amendments are made to then reach out to current operators who may not have a permit. The way that we have structured the code changes is to look at short-term rentals in residential zones and then short-term rentals in all of our other zones where residential use would be permitted. So one of the things that we had originally proposed is allowing one short-term rental in a detached, attached, or duplex structure. Plan Commission had recommended to us to amend this to allow a short-term rental unit in both units of a duplex, and that would be for both residential zones and commercial zones, and then to remove the ADU owner occupancy requirement that is currently in the draft. When it comes to multifamily structures, that's three or more units, we have put in a 20% cap and then just noted that they would need to come into compliance with building and fire code requirements. Another amendment from Plan Commission that they recommended, so there is a section 17C 316040C5 that talks about making sure that structures maintain their residential nature from the outside, so, you know, no inclusion of something like a commercial sign or commercial style lighting. They felt that that was a little bit squishy and confusing, so they had recommended to staff to take that out as part of their recommendation to council. And then same thing for the short-term rentals in all of our other zones. They would suggest that we allow a duplex to have a short-term rental in each unit, so two of the units. And then they did make changes to one additional section in 17C 316050. So we do have a notification requirement existing in the code about notifying the adjacent property owners and also the property owners across the street. Staff had included that in the reconstruction of short-term rentals in our non-residential zones as like a good neighbor policy and kind of echo the way it's written in the residential zones. Plan Commission felt that that might be a little bit too burdensome, especially in our downtown zones where you could have a lot of adjacent property owners. So they had recommended to staff to remove that. So the way we've updated the fees concurrently with the way we are restructuring the code is that the permit fee that's existing would bump up to $200, and then the annual renewal would stay at $100. It's just a $50 increase. And then we've scaled back what the previous fee was for type B, because that had been reviewed as a conditional use permit type III, so it was over $4,000 to get that. And so we've put it more in line with what's currently in place, proposing $300 for a permit for a short-term rental in a non-residential zone, and then just a slightly higher annual renewal fee. The additional thing would be $105 per hour fee that's for the fire department, so they will be completing life safety annual inspections as just a part of their regular work, and so they were generous enough to agree that they would also inspect for short-term rentals since they already know what they're looking for, they're going out to these structures. So that's just to cover their staff time. Oh, shoot. All right, well, hold on just a second, because this should not be off the screen. Sorry about that. The last thing is, so staff has proposed a $2 per night platform fee. The idea with this being, so the platforms are the ones collecting it, so they also collect the taxes, the lodging taxes, that get sent to the Department of Revenue. And so as a way to try and compensate for their impacts to the long-term housing supply, we went with a platform fee, since we do have a little bit more ability to show an excess between a fee and what it's mitigating for than the ability to increase taxes. But the overarching themes with the code changes is we want to create a path to compliance. We know there are a lot of units operating that are not supposed to be currently, so we don't want to tell them, hey, you're operating out of compliance without first having code in place that says, and here are the steps to come into compliance. And Granicus will be helping with us as far as monitoring, reaching out to the operators, and just helping them figure out what steps they need to get their permit approved. And then the unit caps that were proposed, obviously, we're trying to balance allowing this accessory use, but also acknowledging that it is having an impact on long-term housing supply, not just here, but nationally. And then a big focus on increasing our life safety compliance. So in addition to the fire department completing their annual inspections, we're having, we've proposed language where the owner or operator would fill out and have notarized a life safety compliance form that notes, like, yes, the fire, the smoke detectors are in compliance, like, they're working, the fire extinguishers have been checked annually, we've marked where the egress exits are, all of that sort of stuff, as a nod to you're taking on the short-term rental, it's your liability to ensure safety, but also we just want to check that you're aware of those things.
So Amanda, how long would we allow for them to come into compliance, and would that be on an individual basis?
It's a good question. I think it would kind of be on, I think, a case-by-case basis, because if, let's say, it's a multifamily structure in a commercial zone, so coming into compliance would require getting it fire sprinklered if it wasn't already, and that could take some time. So I think it would be somewhat, like, we would look and see what is required for you to come into compliance. Obviously, they shouldn't be operating during that time if they haven't gotten a permit approved.
And the compliance will fall where? Who will be doing all this compliance monitoring?
Granicus. So they'll be monitoring all of the platforms that are licensed to operate in the state of Washington, and then providing data to staff that we can check on a dashboard. And then if new ones come online, because it is somewhat seasonal, we'll be able to reach out to new people as they come on or offline to say, hey, these are the requirements for you, even if you're just doing a short-term rental for one weekend a year.
Thank you. You were first.
Well, so my question is, do you, by chance, have a calculation, or could you, that would just show the cost per unit relative to hotel motel? So obviously, they have a hotel motel tax, but I'm sure they also pay fire fees, et cetera. So if we could do a full per-unit basis there, compare it to the per-unit here, just to see that they're equal and that one isn't more than the other, I think that would be really important.
The fee definitely helps try and level the playing field. So for hotel motel, as long as they're over 40 units, they get charged that $4 per night tourism promotion area fee, and then, so they pay 8.8% in lodging tax, and then because they are over 40 units, they get an additional special hotel motel tax. As far as short-term rentals or anything under 40 units, they pay 9% lodging tax, and the 2% excise tax that the city is able to collect also is applicable to them because they are type of lodging. And then that $2 per night platform fee just helps kind of edge it closer. I know the legislature was considering new language to allow municipalities to go up to a 10% excise tax on short-term rentals that would specifically go back into funding affordable housing, but it did kind of fizzle out at the end of this session.
So you're still looking at a revenue tax of some kind?
We're going through the fee route rather than the tax, since we're somewhat tied in what we're allowed to charge for the tax. Legal staff did look at that, and the most that we would be able to go with would be a 2%, in addition to the 2% excise tax.
Okay, so that's on pause, at least for now. My other just thing that I think would be really good, and I may propose an amendment to this effect, but I think if you convert to a long-term rental within three years, we should refund all of your money. I mean, I think there should be an incentive to put these on the market, and I think that that would be a way to do that, because my fear is the more we regulate these, the less we're going to get, and that means even fewer rentals and long-term rentals in the rental market as well. So I think if we can incentivize folks to convert the short terms, then they might actually get them built and convert them.
Councilmember Stradlin?
So can we go back really quick? Explain to me the notification, the changes in the notification, and then also the changes that the Plan Commission made regarding signs, commercial lighting, and that kind of thing in residential, that taking that out? Is that what you said?
Yes, so they just thought that that was somewhat common sense, that someone shouldn't be altering. I think they also took a little bit of issue in case, for some reason, there was a renovation that might be considered, you know, removing the residential character of a structure, but might be necessary to make it functional. So.
Could you re-explain that? Because I don't understand that.
Provide some clarification. So the, in the Plan Commission's opinion, the language, which was pre-existing language, so it wasn't part of our proposal, but it was language in the ordinance that is on the books today, had some language about not, I don't remember the exact words, but not reducing the residential character of a structure or something like that, and signs were one of the specifically called-out items. We have sign code that already applies in these zones, so there is no proposed change to the sign code itself. The feeling was that that provision within the short-term rental code ended up being a little bit confusing and was also not very clear, you know, what kind of change would actually be considered to reduce the residential character of a house. It's something that we would have a hard time administering anyway. So we do have existing protections in the code so that these don't turn into small hotels, you know, advertising with neon signs and things. The sign code would still be the same. It just took that one provision out of the short-term rental code.
Talk about the lighting for a minute, if you could.
The lighting?
The lighting?
Lighting.
Like putting up commercial lighting, that kind of thing? Wouldn't that be part of the sign?
I don't know if lighting specifically is addressed in the sign code. I'm also not sure where that concern origin is from. I don't know.
You just mentioned the Plan Commission.
So you're thinking neon, you don't want neon lighting around my...
Or big lights.
Right, so Cobra-style overhead light would be more commercial and not appropriate in a residential area. Those were just examples of ways that people could alter the structure, and so it wasn't specifically that it's called out in the existing code, that you can't have a certain type of lighting.
And then like a good neighbor agreement or the notification process, that was, Plan Commission wanted that taken out?
Right, so Plan Commission felt that, given how many adjacent property owners are in the commercial areas or other non-residential areas, that that could become really burdensome and costly.
That's just for commercial, right?
Yes, so in residential areas, we're keeping the notification requirement, so you're required to notify the adjacent property owners, the ones who touch your property boundary, and the ones across the street.
Perfect.
And so it's just in the non-residential areas that they had recommended removing that. The other thing that they had directed staff to do, to your last question, is amend the language so that you're allowed to have a short-term rental in both units of a duplex instead of just one of the units, and then removing the requirement for owner occupancy if there is an ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kira?
So along those lines, and kind of following up on Councilmember Kacar's concerns about kind of sequestering possibly long-term rentals, because people think these are easier to administer. So if we're going ahead with BOKA, we're allowing duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes at all zones, and then we're allowing them to rent, yeah, both without owner occupancy requirements, aren't we incentivizing people to build those duplexes so that they become short-term rentals, rather than if only one is a short-term rental, the other one is long-term, it's not as likely to become little hotels all over the city? I really question whether that's going to do or have, be counterintuitive, and we're going to end up with people building short-term rentals as duplexes.
I think the rock and the hard place that we're trying to navigate between is that we've heard from some of the developers locally that they utilize short-term rentals to either pay back construction loans or actually to basically subsidize more affordable units within their project. So the income from the short-term rental helps them reduce the rent charge for those more affordable units. But then on the flip side is that there's research coming out, you know, from various institutions, that an increase in short-term rentals in a community has a positive correlation with an increase in home prices for sale, but also rent in the community.
And that's my concern. I like your idea of charging or giving back, because if we have, say, 1,500 short-term rentals right now, just throwing that number out, those are 15 dwellings that people aren't able to rent or buy, and we don't even know how many are out there, and I know there are communities that have restricted short-term rentals to, say, none in the city because of, you know, rising housing prices. So still kind of on the fence about this. Seems counterintuitive to me.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I hear the concerns. I think a good question for us to ponder as a council is, why do we have some people moving from long-term rentals to short-term rentals, and why is it perhaps, you know, more profitable? Why is it, you know, potentially less of a headache? What are the issues that we're facing that, where we're not incentivizing properly or creating a good climate for housing in the way that we would like it? I think that's a good question for us to ponder. When we're looking at policies that we pass, there are effects to the things that we do, and so that might be something for us, just as a council, to think on.
Can you go back to your slide on the comparison on the fees? First of all, on the 2% excise tax, do you know where those funds go? Do they go to a housing fund now? I don't know.
I don't believe so. This might be a better question for finance and for legal.
Okay.
That's existing in the code, and so we put in a clarification that because a short-term rental is considered a lodging, it should also buy...
And I have another question for Ms. Shadle in a sec, but before you go, one thing I requested before, and I didn't really see it, but I might not have looked closely, is I would like it that they don't get a permit if they've been out of compliance until they pay the back fees for the years that they didn't, so that the people who did pay the taxes and the permits don't feel like chumps, like they should have just ignored it. So that's one thing I'm looking for before it comes to us, is that we have that, and it's very well-defined, so it's not on a one-on-one basis. So I'll just say that, but, and maybe Spencer's coming to the microphone about that.
I can just address that quickly. We've talked about that internally, about how we would administer that, and I think there's some concerns that that is not the way that we've enforced other actions.
there's some concerns that that is not the way that we've enforced other actions in terms of code compliance. There's also some concerns about potentially opening up legal challenges there. That's more of a legal question, I guess, but that's why that's not part of this proposal. There's not really language that we could write that we felt comfortable with, just in terms of writing the code, so.
All right, well, I still feel strongly, but I'd love to hear from Ms. Shadle.
I think you might have some difficulty with retroactive application, because you're creating and updating these rules and statutes now, and then you're expecting to apply them retroactively, and that's usually discouraged in the law. So I think we would have to look at the details on that, but I think there'd be some difficulty if you were inclined to...
What's the penalty for not getting a business license, though?
I should know that.
I mean, there is one. So, I mean, there is a remedy.
I think that it's, I don't know. I'll have to look and get back to you.
Well, whatever remedy we have, I agree that if we can't put a new remedy on the back. So that's why I was thinking, you don't get to get your permit until you've paid the remedy that has existed when you ignored the rule. So I just want to make it super clear that people are doing that, and another lawyer. All right.
You may know the penalty.
I believe it's a civil infraction.
Microphone.
Can you use the mic?
It would be a civil infraction under SMC 105.
And what's the statute of limitations on those?
The, I'm not exactly sure on that one. I haven't looked at it, but you...
Okay. I just want it super clear so that everyone knows, and it's not feeling like I got the one code enforcement person when I called and someone else got the other, that we just say. Because people have been complaining for years that they have been paying the fees and the other people haven't, and there was a huge delay in getting the Granicus, and I'm so glad we have it, so thank you all for getting it. But I just think it is unfair if we don't hold people accountable for doing what everybody knew they were supposed to do and many people just ignored.
Well, one of the things about a civil infraction is there's, if you do get your license, there's a certificate of compliance, which the individual who has been cited can request that, and then the citation would be dismissed. So if they are issued the citation, they come in and get their permits, then it could be dismissed.
The question is whether they can, whether they have to pay back the other, how it gets dismissed, I mean...
That doesn't come under the civil infraction. It's just a penalty to get in compliance, that's the goal.
I know, but if you get in compliance by, if you're simply now licensed and you weren't, you haven't really gotten in compliance because you didn't pay what you owe. It's one thing when you have a defective sidewalk and you get that fixed, but if you actually, if your compliance is you're supposed to pay a fee every year, how do you get compliance with the back fees?
Well, I think that's going to be a real legal challenge to, which you'll probably have to go on a base, a single unit, one after another, because you'll have to find out when they started. Can you prove it? That our contractor, can they actually work with this to go back and find out? And again, this is retro, and we're trying to get compliance by these people. And on top of that, going back kind of looks punitive. I don't know if it's meant to be that way, but it does appear punitive.
Punitive would be making them pay double. Paying singles just what they were supposed to pay.
Yeah. And another component, I think, in moving this forward is trying to get people in compliance and going back, I hate to bring this word up, but the pandemic and how everything got shut down, the state said you cannot operate. So it's another level of trying to find out if these people were operating, and their defense is the state said we couldn't operate. It's just something to think about.
The 2% excise tax, we didn't get the answer. Did you get an answer to that?
No.
Where's that money go?
That's me.
Okay, go get your mic.
So the 2% excise tax comes out from the tourism facility world in the OCWs, which is 6720, the chapter of the OCWs. And so, as I understand it, the 2% excise tax is in this Spokane municipal code, consistent with state law, and there are revenue sharing agreements between the city and the county that divide up that through the tourism, TPA, Tourism Protection, Tourism Promotion Administration or Board. So it's provided for already in the municipal code. It's, one of the edits that we're proposing to the short-term rental world is to make the definition of lodging to include specifically short-term rentals. I think it's really there, but to clarify, in the event there were any questions.
But just to follow up, do you know what the cities share, what it goes to? Or does the city keep any share of that 2%?
I think that whole share is addressed by an inter-local agreement with Spokane County, and it's divided up in the tourism promotion.
I have kind of a follow-up. I know Councilmember Cathcart, and I've been dominating for a little bit, but the platform fee, is that designated in this to go into a housing fund, like the fund for the money, like for 1,590 or something like that? Or is that...
I think the platform fee on units that are 39 or less, on those businesses that operate 39 or less units, could be a more discretionary use of the funds. The RCW Chapter 8208 allows for a $4 fee or up to $4 fee under the Tourism Promotion Act to be used, but that applies to 40 units or more. So that's more to bring in alignment, the short-term rental with 8280.
But my question is, in this code, does it say where those funds go?
It does not say where those funds go.
And then, is there a limit? I think the proposal we're hearing is $2 per night. Is there any upper limit of that?
So, looking at the statutory scheme of 8208 in the RCWs, it's $2. And then if you wanted to go higher, you would need to have signatures of 60% or more of the businesses that operate in that basket. So you would have to take extra steps.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Well, just back to the previous on the license, have we made kind of a big emphatic attempt to tell short-term rentals that they need to buy into a business license and made that very clear to them in the past?
I think we tried.
I'm just wondering, because if we have, then I think you could kind of point to that date as, you know, sort of like where, you know, they probably need to catch up from. But if not, my suggestion is we should, I mean, we could do it right away and do some sort of a, kind of a quasi-amnesty that says, hey, if you, you know, pay in now for up to this many years or months, or whatever that might be, then, you know, we'll sort of forgive all the other issues. And so I'm just kind of wondering what that...
The problem with notifying people who are operating without a permit is that it was very difficult for staff without the support of Granicus to even figure out who they are, where they were. Because on the platform, for safety reasons, when you book, it shows you the general area. It doesn't give you an address or anything like that. So, I mean, without Granicus actually identifying where they are, it would have been near impossible for staff to reach out. What we did do is email all of the people who, since 2015, have gotten a permit or are current.
Okay.
I think we've done something like this.
When we passed it originally, we made a big deal about it and did a push to get people, you guys weren't here, so... But when we first passed it, because I worked on that before I was on council, and there was a lot of outreach, there was a lot of publicity about it, because we'd never done it before, and it was a huge thing, because the B&amp;Bs were angry because they had one set of criteria and rules, and there were none on the short-term rentals. And the hotels were furious as well. So it was a big push back then, yes.
I just want to add, there's an additional dimension here, which is that a lot of these short-term rentals are operating in commercial areas, where we, actually, our current code does not allow for them to operate. So unless we pass the code changes that we've presented here, the zoning aspect of it, not the fees and taxes, there are a lot of short-term rentals operating currently that are technically not supposed to be operating. So we're trying to bring them into compliance, and part of that will be that Granicus, our vendor, would be sending information about how to get your business license, how to apply for a permit. But we don't want to send that information out until we've actually created a path for these operators to become compliant.
So then is Granicus looking at all of the websites where these are? So if I have a bed and breakfast in my neighborhood that I've not, no, you guys don't know about...
You mean a short-term rental?
Or a short-term rental that you guys don't know about, am I going to put that on a website for people to rent? I mean, do people do that?
Are you reporting it's not on the website?
The address isn't on the website, Karen.
They can just, so rented, or once they register, then it is?
Right, so regardless of the platform they use, so Granicus pulls data across all of the ones that are licensed in Washington State to be a platform. And then, I'm not sure what happens in the black box on their side, but they do identify the actual address for the short-term rental. And people do list units for more than 30 days, which is considered a short-term rental by the state and by the city. So they also collect data on basically long-term rentals, so you can rent something for up to two months or probably more on any of those vacation rental platforms. And they give us that data, but since we're really focused on anything that's 30 days or less, that's what we're focusing on.
Do we ever catch, do we ever find the people that, I guess we can't find everybody that's doing it, right?
So the way it often works, not just here, but in general, is it's complaint-driven. If you are like the party house short-term rental and your neighbors are dealing with noise or trash or, you know, like extra cars, that's when we hear about it. I know, so Donna has been administering the program since she came on to the city and is very familiar with all of the people who have active permits, and she says that she rarely receives complaint phone calls. So I don't know if that just means we have conscientious operators in the city, or they're spread out enough.
Thanks, that's interesting.
Thank you, Amanda. Any more questions, reach out to Amanda for clarity. Next, we're going to have our monthly investment report, and Christopher Johnson's going to come up and share that with us.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you very much for some time today to go over the monthly investment report for April. So we'll start by looking at the current cash and investment balances, and then go over the portfolio's composition, and then look at the portfolio performance during the month. We ended April with cash and investment balances with a little over $391 million in hand, and that's about a 2% increase from where we ended the month of March. Most of that increase stems from additional cash and equivalents held. That's a result of net positive operating cash, as well as maturities that occurred in April that were not put in, back into the portfolio via reinvestment. As to the composition, we had 60% of the portfolio allocated to federal agency-based debt, and our second-largest allocation was Treasury's cash, held in the local government investment pool at 15%. As you can see off to the right, all of our positions complied with policy as to the maximum allowable per issuer type within the portfolio, and our largest holding during the month of April was Fannie Mae. Now, looking at the activities during the month in terms of what came off the portfolio via maturity, as to what went back on via reinvestment, we had $16.5 million of federal agency-based debt come off the portfolio. As you can see, they were relatively low coupon and low yield. And what did we do with this money once we got it back? We didn't really do anything. We held it in the Treasury's cash, simply because these maturities occurred in the latter part of April, and we were cognizant of a Federal Reserve meeting in the early part of May. So we opted to let that meeting conclude and see how the market reaction, what happened after that meeting, what the market reaction was after that. We're being paid almost 5% in the government pool, so being paid pretty handsomely to wait, and so we can afford to be a bit choosy when we put money to work at this time. Looking at the portfolio from a liquidity context, we have 40% of our positions due back to us in less than 24 months. So as we enter May, which is one of our more liquid months, given property tax cash coming in, we're sitting in really good shape going forward through the rest of Q2 and into Q3. Looking at performance, we ended April with $8.6 million in unrealized losses. That's $800,000 less than what our losses were in the month of March. So we had some favorable rate movements in the market that allowed some of that pricing pressure to come off our portfolio. Overall, we generated $895,000 in interest income during April, and that puts our income generation year-to-date at $3.3 million. Now, looking at the performance of the portfolio versus its benchmark, we had an average maturity of two and a half years. That's right in line with what our strategy and structure was intended to be when I kind of went over that in the February report in March, so we're in good shape there. Our duration ticked down from 2.4 to 2.3, so just a little bit less sensitive to interest rates. Our portfolio average was 2.4% via coupon, compared to our benchmark, a little less than 1 and 1/4. So we are earning more interest income than we would be if we aligned with that benchmark. Our yield to maturity is at 2.88, which is slightly above the 2.74 from March, and while it is underperforming our benchmark, we're a hold-to-maturity investor, so we're just going to have to be patient and continue to put higher yielding positions on when those opportunities present themselves. But overall, anything marching toward that 300-basis-point level is the goal. Overall, that's all I have for April. I did have a question, if you wouldn't mind me posing one.
Please.
Okay. I usually do the quarterly reports, and then I do these kind of little updates throughout the month. Do you still see value in having these monthly reports? Or would you like to, you do? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, definitely.
Any questions? Yeah.
So with the liquidity that we're experiencing right now, do we have any guidelines on with the debt at the federal level and the interest rates that we can return on that? Is there any plan to try to capitalize on that as much as possible, or what is the...
Are you talking about the debt ceiling?
No, no, not the debt ceiling. I'm talking about where is the yield curve on the bonds is inverted? Are we looking at investing more in short-term than long-term, or how does that...
Yeah, so when we put together the structure and strategy earlier this year, we focused our March purchases on three-year maturities, which was as long out in the curve as we wanted to go, given last year we put most of our investments toward the long end of the curve and kind of locked in rates anywhere from eight to 10 years. So we went out pretty far last year. We were trying to focus in on that middle portion of that structure, if you recall, the latter. We did that, so now going forward for the rest of this year, we are focusing on the nearer part of that curve where rates are the highest right now. So, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. We'll see you next month?
Okay.
No, July, you're off next month.
Oh, that's true.
The April permit report, Steve McDonald.
Good afternoon, Chair and Council President, members of council. So today, we're going to be talking about the April permits and then the year-to-date updates as well along the way. So the first slide, this is total permit activity, so not just building permits that we call building or construction permits, but things include the trades, electrical permits, plumbing, all that. So you can see we're up slightly on the year-to-date in blue, and in April, we're down slightly, but really not a significant change either way. And then we move on to what we call building permits, which are really the construction permits, and we're slightly up on the year-to-date and slightly down for the month. Same, same kind of following along with the overall permits. And next up, though, is a significant difference on multifamily housing units. You can see that we're up tremendously, both year-to-date and in April. So we're showing year-to-date, we'll get to some of the slides later that kind of total the multifamily permits, but right now on multifamily housing units issued, so these, I shouldn't say permits, because one permit can have, you know, 150 units, and that's what this really reflects. When you see the 483 year-to-date... When you see the 483 year-to-date, that's not 483 permits by any stretch, but probably closer to 50 permits or so. So multifamily housing is really doing well. Single-family, much less so. We're down about 50% in the, in the permits for both year-to-date and for the month. And then we kind of get the breakdown here. We're going to give you the breakdown for April and the different categories of housing and then do the year-to-date as well. So you can see that we have it broken out into single-family residents for the month, duplexes, multifamily units and change of use. And change of use is typically an office conversion to housing or any kind of change of use from anything other than residential to residential. So that's our April. And then year-to-date is kind of takes it all together. So you can see that total number of 577 is significant. So 577 units have been permitted year-to-date. And to give you some comparison there, last year for 2022, for the entire year, we had 1,100 units of housing. So we're only four months in and yet we have more than half of the performance of last year. So that's significant. It's good news and we, we hope it, hope it continues. And that's really due to multifamily. And the multifamily is up in turn because we've had some larger units that have added to that. Iron Bridge, a significant one, about 170 units in their first phase. Magnesium Village as well, a total of 500 units. So that's, or five, I think in phases, but we've had some large projects that have come And then we have the breakdown for the BOKA projects. So we've, we track the BOKA and we track the ADUs. And you can see, if you go over to the far right, the bottom line here is that we've had 25 units of BOKA. So that tells you that, remember that BOKA helps support duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. We're really, what we're seeing is the activity overall is duplexes. Very few, more than duplexes have come through under BOKA so far. There's plenty that are in the, in the hopper that have come through pre-dev and hopefully we'll go out there, but most of that activity has helped push duplex development. And then ADUs at the far right there, 39. Now these, both of these numbers, the 25 and the 39 are cents we put for that initiative. This isn't on a monthly or yearly basis.
Steve?
Yeah.
Are you able to break down duplex versus townhome?
Say that again.
The, the percentage of, of the BOKA housing that are townhomes versus just a duplex?
Yeah. I, this doesn't show that, so I need, I need to see if there are townhome. I mean, I know they have come through pre-dev. I just don't know that we've actually issued one yet and I, we'll have to dig in on that.
It'd be great to just break that out.
Yeah. And then this is the slide that we've been showing you for the last few months here, which is kind of housing in the pipeline. So this, the first part of the chart talks about projects that are currently in plan review. So that's, you know, oftentimes the, the process is developers will come in and do a pre-development. That doesn't lock them into anything, but you know, that's, a certain percentage of those are going to take the next steps after that pre-development, come forward and submit their plans and actually be issued a permit. But this, in plan review, is people have taken all those steps and they've paid money to pay at this point for their plan review. So we're generally, we're generally really confident that once somebody's played, paid for plan review, they're, they're typically going to go forward with the project. And so we have over 1,000 units that are currently in plan review. Down below, we talk about those projects that haven't yet paid the money, submitted their plans, but are gone through, are either a pre-dev or MFTE. MFTE takes its own application process where they have to come through and fill out an application for that. So there is, and this has been keeping roughly about that same number around 3,000. So there's an additional 3,000 units, some of which are, and probably a majority of which will hopefully come through the system and actually submit and apply. But those, that's our pipeline information. And then the last three slides, I'll just go through quickly, but April information, this is all in your packet as well, but it just tells you by council district, number of building permits issued, residential units, ADUs, BOKA, construction value, broken down by council district. That's, that's the April one. We have the same thing year-to-date. And then the last slide is just a list of some of the larger projects that have been permitted. And so we'll continue to update that. The next thing we're going to try and do with Excel, and it is hard, we were just meeting on it today, is to pull out other factors, not just housing. I mean, I know we're going to continue to have a focus on housing because it is a crisis, but I'd like to get information in there about square footage of industrial property, square footage of commercial property, offices, retail, et cetera, and so that we have kind of a fuller picture of our permits, not just the focus on housing. So that's what we'll be looking to do for the next, next month. Any questions?
Yeah. Just wondering on the, the previous slide, the numbers, what percentage of those, well, back a couple, I guess, what percentage of those are along 195 and have any moved forward since the moratorium ended?
And which slider are you talking about?
Well, yeah, here we go. The total pre-dev.
I think very few of these would, would be, because at the time the moratorium was put on and lifted, there really weren't a significant number of units that were ready to come forward for the plan review process. There was people, there was landowners that had land and had plans, but those weren't really ready to go at that time. So I, I don't believe very many at all are in that upper level top section of actually in plan review.
And then just, just to follow on and slightly, slightly off topic, but have we communicated with folks who've kind of gone through pre-dev but haven't paid the money yet to say, hey, GFCs are going to go up March of next year, or at least by March of next year, and it would behoove you to move quick with your development? Because I feel like there's a built-in incentive there to get people to move.
Right. Yeah. We have talked about that, but we haven't done an outreach plan yet, and that is something that I, I would recommend too. So I think, I think we'll figure out a way to, to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Probably through the overall GFC process that's happening now might be the best way to do that, to let them know what it is now that there's groups meeting to discuss this and then, you know, warn them about that deadline next March.
Yeah. Great.
Any other questions for Steve?
Are you done? I was waiting until the.
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah. I'll get you, Councilmember, it's a poem.
Yeah. I was going to ask with the, the large increase in the number of multifamily units.
Yes.
That's coming on this year. Is there any, again, groups here who have a large number of units that are trying to get it in because of the GFC uncertainty? Do we know that?
Um, I mean, I, I think there's people that both tried to get it in before the vote and then actually it was, it worked out better to, if they would have waited. There's a couple of projects that, where that happened. But I don't know of a large number that have done that. I think one thing that might be pushing some of the multifamily is, I, I, well, I think it can be BOKA, which we're talking about, you know, smaller units. It could be the energy and building code changes that are going to be coming up in, yeah. I think that's probably a big factor and, and we're probably going to see some continued push on that up until the July 1 timeline.
And then on your, so to follow up on that, are we going to be able to process all those permits in time for them to, if that's what they're trying to be?
Yeah. We're doing our best and we're actually coming up with better tools to measure how long it's taking us to do those things with the understanding that, you know, that the most important time actually is from the time someone submits a plan until they get their first comments back. Because we also measure the entire time from when they submit until when they actually get their permit. But there's, on these larger projects, there's lots of back and forth meetings and weeks that go by sometimes with no activity on our part because we're waiting for a redesign or changes. And so we're going to try and measure especially that time of initial submission to when we get them their initial comments back. And the other thing is, we, if we do get into that case, you know, preemptively, we may be coming to you to ask for some additional funds for a contract that we have with SafeBilt, which is a private kind of plan review company that we use as a safety valve to help us keep things moving. And we've generally used them for projects that require a lot more engineering, you know, high-rise type engineering skill than we, we have very few people that can do that work. So we use them for that, but we've also used them when we have a lot of just basic projects coming through and we, we have a certain number that go, go through them. So we can, we can use that and we're, we're using that right now, just making sure we have enough. But if it looks like we're being overwhelmed, we'll definitely look to see if we can use them more. Yeah.
Sorry. One, one more question here. So on this one in particular, so the 1,096. When, when should we reasonably start to see these units coming online and, and available for, for residents?
Yeah. I mean, it just really depends. I mean, each, you know, a small project might, might take a month or two to wind its way through a certain process. Others might, I mean, there's other projects that could take several months. So I think each, each month, we're going to have a certain percent of these coming online. And that's another Exela kind of issue that we need to work on because what will really show that will be, sometimes we're not going to know when a building that we've already issued a permit until we do the certificate of occupancy. And the certificate, certificate of occupancy right now, we're not able to pull that easily through Exela. So we want to do that. And that way I, I could give a better picture about how many CFOs we issued in a given period and we're not there yet.
Councilmember, respond.
Yeah. Thanks for all this. I was just vaguely remembering that Council passed the resolution about ADUs for annual report sometime last summer. I don't know if that is still on the top of your guys' mind about when that would be coming forward.
Yeah. I couldn't, and it was.
Sometime over the summer.
An annual report from the time that we instituted that.
The ADU changed, yeah. It was some basic information like where they're located, how big they are, if they're owned or occupied.
Yes. And I'll, I'll get with, I know planning, long-range planning was kind of focused on that too, but we can, we can work with them to see.
I just want to flag that for summer months sometime.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. See you in July.
Yes.
Next, we're going to have CHHS, the YHDP Host Homes Contract with Jen Saracides.
Good afternoon. So I'm here today to ask for permission to disperse $138,000 to MHA Speak Out, Speak Up to administer the Host Homes project. This is part of the four projects that we received funding for through the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project, which is a HUD-funded project. And the last one was this Host Homes program that our coordinated community plan had developed. And we put out several RFPs and we had not found a provider that we wanted to award these funds to. So we have identified MHA Speak Out, Speak Up as the provider for this. And Host Homes are a short-term housing intervention for young people who are experiencing homelessness. It essentially allows them to connect with an existing network, whether it's friends or family, where they can go and stay at that location. And then we can provide them the case management and some, some financial support to pay for groceries or to pay for utility bills or something that allows them to continue to reside at that location.
What's MHA stand for?
It stands for Mental Health Association.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jen?
Yeah. And I guess do they have, I'm not familiar with them at all. So do they have experience doing these sorts of things? Have they had these kinds of contracts awarded before?
MHA has never had a HUD-funded contract before, so it is new for them. Looking at the applications that we got, they really fit the need that was specific to folks who would typically use Host Homes. So we know that going into this contract that we'll need to provide a lot of technical assistance to ensure that we're meeting those guidelines. These funds roll into our Continuum of Care Grant effective 2024 and become regular Continuum of Care projects. So they do have to adhere to a lot of the same guidelines. Right now we have some changes, like we have a match waiver through 2024 where they're not required to pay the 25% match that you're typically required as part of the COC. So when that comes on, they'll have to do that. So prepping for that in advance and making sure that they're prepared to join the COC portfolio will be important.
Great. Thank you, Jen.
Okay, thanks.
Last today, we have the Teen Centers RFI Resolution and that's Councilmembers' bone.
Yeah. Thank you. So just a little background on this. This is from the ARPA Youth Behavioral Health Bucket that we set aside. On the work group, we have Councilmember Cathcart and Councilmember Kinnear and I have been working on how to allocate that three and a half, three and a half million? I can't, I remember three, three and a half million dollars. And we've talked about it once before, but it's kind of another touch point with Council to see if we're headed in the right direction. But the first bucket of funding will be like a million dollar, it will be a million dollars for capital projects. And that one, Matt's been working with Michelle and that should be coming forward really soon to go out to RFP. Then there's about, or there's $300,000 with partnership with the school district to get start school-based health clinics. The latest I've heard, and we're going to be meeting with the schools at the end of this month for an update on that, but they're actually going to be starting two new health centers with that funding, with the, the, the school district is matching. And so that should be started next fall in the school year at North Central and Shadle Park. So that leaves about three, $700,000 of that first initial round. So that would be 2 million of the three and a half million dollars for the expansion of a teen center. The way we talked about this is that it would be a city-owned building that could be operated at a lower cost to be programming space for teens that could be ongoing and sustainable instead of one-time funding that would be going out the door. Really, when we look at teen centers as a space, we're seeing youth that are being involved in activities after school that are not productive and healthy and lead to them being criminal justice involved. So this could be a space for them to be in a safe place and positive programming, lots of different options of peer-to-peer navigation, job training, computer programming, sports, athletics, really runs a gamut. But we, we, as a group, we talked about different ways of how that could operate and work, but we didn't really settle on a path forward. So we wanted to kind of open this up to the broader community to hear information from the community. Having heard from procurement, RFI is probably not the best way forward. It'd probably be more like a town hall to solicit information and kind of information gathering, probably more similar to the ARPA process at the beginning where people submitted forms to do it, to submit their ideas of what like a teen center could operate, what that would look like. And then we can shape an RFP based on more generation of ideas of what would go out there. And the packet included some ideas of what the teen center could do and with the intention behind it. But the, the main criteria would be that be demonstrate, or would be targeting at-risk youth, serving historically marginalized communities and would have activities and services that would meet a variety of youth, traditionally those who are left out of the current programming at schools right now for middle, high school teens that aren't in after-school activities. And, and then plan for sustainable operations going forward so that it wouldn't be someone operating it that didn't have a path after one year, but really trying to have it sustainable on their own. Yes, questions?
I just would recommend that if we haven't already, reach out to ESD 101 and the Shadle Health Coalition. They've been doing a lot of work in West Central and Northwest Spokane. And I think because it's ESD 101, ESD 101, maybe citywide with youth programs and family programs, just kind of like what you're talking about.
The next step would be kind of opening up to the partnerships and people coming together at the town hall.
Make sure that they're invited to that, yes.
Yeah. So that's exactly the intent is for bringing those partners together. And, and another criteria would be planned partnership. So how can entities work together to make this a really successful plan? And ideally it'd be great if we could get multiple teen centers. But city, our side would be trying to upfront the capital to start the place and then trying to find partners who can keep it operating. But yeah, absolutely inviting them.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
Feels like the right direction?
Yep.
That's great news.
Community influence is always good. If there's nothing further to come before this committee, we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be July 17th and please join us at 3:30 for our briefing.